Have a little technical issue before we get started.
Should be good to go.
Okay, there's nothing on the screen. We can't see ourselves at all. Township Board of Supervisors meeting. It is Wednesday, May 28th, 2025. I call the meeting to order. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence today in special memory of Alec Campbell, the Tyler Park Ranger that died over the weekend in a tragic accident.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, just a couple announcements. As a reminder, there's two opportunities for comment this evening. There are sign up sheets in the back of the room. First opportunity are for agenda items only. If you'd like to speak on an agenda item, please sign up on the sheet. And the second opportunity for public comment is at the end of the meeting, and if you'd like to speak then, you can sign up on the sheet there. Are these agenda items? Mrs. Ricardo, you're going to speak on an agenda item, or?
I'm just present as well.
I'm sorry?
I'm speaking my own stuff.
Okay, so you want to do that? That'll be at the end of the meeting. And then you have George McHale. Is that an agenda item? Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
I can just say your name for the record, thanks.
George McHale, Cedar Brook. In regards to Penn Vest, we had a $13 million that were allotted, $7 million that's going to be a loan over the span of 20 years. Is that going to be falling to the residents, I'm assuming, the $7 million that we had alone for Penn Vest?
Okay, are you talking about the water project?
Yes, for the water project, yes.
Okay, that's going to be managed by the Water Authority?
Okay.
The only thing I can tell you is that the $7 million may or may not even be used.
Okay.
It's a line of credit, essentially, so the $13 million in grant, and then the Water Authority would have to determine how they use that money and how they would have to charge backward if at all.
So, and there's my question. When I spoke to Mike Sullivan, they said that they were operating at minimum staffing to keep our rates low. Our rates are currently 30 to 60, anywhere between 30 to 60% higher than our competitive municipalities. In addition to that, when we do open up these new 420 homes, it's going to put additional, what, $5 to $10 more rates, or going to increase by $5 to $10. The residents that are going to be, excuse me, I'm going to call them investors, I'm going to call myself an investor, not a resident, or a taxpayer, or a rate payer, or a customer. So if I want to invest and stay in Middletown, knowing that we are 30 to 60% higher, and we are operating at minimal staffing, we are opened up for a lot of liabilities, and with waste in water. And I just want to bring it to attention, as an investor, we should be protected against fraudulent activities. Now, if you look at the regulations from municipality and water, it's only been updated since 2022, and it was only for late charges and delinquencies. Other than that, nothing has been updated since 1992. So when Penn Vest goes, this is an opportunity to update the policies, but I would like them to include a detailed shut-off procedure, because you're going to have 420 residents who do not have shut-off, that cannot have water shut off because their well. But there's no standings from the municipality to keep them from shutting off the water. And when I say that is, there's no standings for their safety precautions, there's no standings, there's no restrictions. When they come and post for, and now this, I was fortunate, okay? This was a glitch in the system, but when water comes out and posts, they post and they wear nice bright reflective vests. Now, on February 5th, there is no procedure that says that water shouldn't be turned off during freezing storm. Now, on February 5th, there was a freezing storm, okay? No procedures to keep water from getting shut off. Now, I'm fortunate to be home there, but my wife and five children were home, and when the municipality comes out, dressed like ninjas, like they're trained recon, I'm in the Marine Corps, they're not trained in the art of stealth, okay? Why is this standard lacking when they want to shut off the bill? Now, they're illegally parked in front of my mailbox, there is no clear decal from my window. The gentleman, I think Chris Lehrer, is holding a five-foot metal bar. Now, be me, and just entertain the fact that you're seeing this. I walk up to the gentleman, I kindly ask him to leave, and I say, hey, if you're going to come down and shut off water, have a sheriff for my protection and yours. Who's my Ben Salem guys? How many people in Ben Salem, right? They have?
I'm not Ben Salem.
Just for an example, they have
Mr. McHale?
ruthless reports on
Time's just about up, so, and this isn't really an agenda item. I kind of let you go, this really shouldn't have been
The Penn Vest updating the water, so
It's not on the agenda today. So just, if you can, just wrap up your comments.
Okay, good to go. So when they do open up the 420, I'm requesting that you look into updating the procedures.
Okay.
30 years is way too long for just people coming up on there. Too many liabilities out there for injuries, and I'll save for the rest three minutes for the next comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'll move on to consent items, approval of minutes. Paula?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I can make a motion. If there are no objections, I request the approval of the minutes from April 23rd.
Any requests from the board? Thank you. Accounts payable, Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for May 14th, 2025. Total all funds, $1,573,046.20. And I also have the bills list for May 28th, 2025. Total all funds, $581,162.73.
Thank you, Kim. And we have one consent item for a grant application. Barry?
Yes, Seth. This is a stormwater management issue where it pertains at Deerfield North Basin, and we're basically applying for a grant. The grant would be $425,000. The total cost of the project is projected to be $446,250. We have to do a 5% match on it, so we're just approving the process of applying for a grant.
Thanks, Barry. That's all we have for consent items. May I have a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any conversation or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, under new business, we have consider bids for the St. Leonard's Road Traffic Signal and Intersection Improvement. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On April 11th of this year, the township received bids for the new traffic signal and intersection improvements at St. Leonard's and Newtown Richborough Roads. The low bidder, T. Schiffer Contractors Incorporated, came in at $606,934.25, but was disqualified for not being a PennDOT pre-qualified prime contractor. The next lowest bid was from Marino Corporation at $630,868.68. As the lowest bidder was disqualified, we now are faced with two options. We are able to award the project to Marino at an additional cost, or to reject all bids. At this point, if I may make a motion?
Please.
I move to reject all bids for the St. Leonard's Road Traffic Signal and Intersection Improvements, and authorize the administration to prepare a new scope of work, and rebid the project to include a new traffic signal at St. Leonard's Road and Newtown Richborough Roads, and intersection improvements at Newtown Richborough Road and Holland Road, and at Newtown Richborough Road and Rockway Spring Garden Mill Road.
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion? Anything else further, Bob?
It's effectively better pricing, hopefully, to do this in bulk, and this is not the first time we've been faced with this. We've discussed the delay and compared that to the potential negative sides of delay. There's some delay ultimately in obtaining the necessary equipment as it is, so I don't think this has any deleterious effect, and I think ultimately we will come to the same conclusion, yet having saved the taxpayers' money. So I'm in favor. Paula?
Yeah, I think if we're going to save money with all those intersections being done, we should look into it and get a better price.
Kim?
I definitely think that we should rebid. One, we could get a better price, and two, we could get more bidders, and could get a better price through the more bidders.
Barry?
Yeah, I agree too, and I think the fact that we make it a larger project, we will have more bidders. It was kind of surprising this time, we only got two bidders on this proposal, one of which didn't qualify for PennDOT. So by making the scope bigger, I think we're going to get more people bidding for it, and I think as a result of that, the price will come down, so it makes sense. And the delay should only be about 30 days, so it's not bad.
I agree with what everybody said. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Reports, first up, Kim?
Okay. All right. Oh, here's from the Parks and Rec. May has brought plenty of rain, but the Parks and Rec Department still delivered the fun. Coming in June, June 6th, don't miss our official kickoff to the summer at the Sun and Fun Fest with food trucks, adult beverage trucks, live music, vendors, lawn games, and so much more. Join us from 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. On June 12th, we have the Children's Interactive Concert at 6:30 at the Municipal Park. June 19th, Class of 84 Band Rocks the Municipal Park. June 23rd and 30th, North Hampton Township Parks and Rec welcomes 492 campers and over 90 staff for a summer full of fun. And don't forget, discount tickets to your favorite summer destinations are available at the Parks and Rec office. Call for details before your trip. For more information about our programs and events, visit www.northhamptonrec.com or contact the Parks and Rec office. And now the Senior Center. The North Hampton Township Police Department is scheduled to visit the center on Thursday, May 29th, that's tomorrow, with Canine Officer Maui. This is a great opportunity for members to have some one-on-one time with North Hampton's finest. And if you haven't met Maui, he is the sweetest dog ever. Not when he's working, though. He's mean when he's working. The Senior Center will host a portion of the 2025 Bucks County Senior Games. Billiards will be held on June 5th, followed by bocce on June 6th. There are a total of 18 events held at various locations throughout the county. Bus trips, Jersey Tenors singing live music lunch at the Huntington Hills Playhouse, June 12th, 2025. Tickets are selling quickly, we have nine seats left. $135 for members and $150 for non-members. And if you've never seen the Jersey Tenors, I've seen them the last couple of years at St. Feeds, and they are excellent. Let the good times roll. A tribute show to Roy Orbison, Carol King, Billy Joel includes live music, dancing, comedy show, lunch at the Shore Club, Spring Lake, New Jersey, June 18th, 2025. There are only three seats left for this trip. 135 members and 150 for non-members. How about the Summer of '69? Summer Party Tickets are available. Food and fun and music. Event date, Friday, June 20th, from 12 to 2:30. $22 per person. This event is open to members and non-members. And please, dress in the '60s theme. That's it.
Thank you, Kim. Lots of stuff going on. Paula?
Okay. I just want to talk about the library. It is a very busy place lately, and we have lots of classes and daily activities for kids and entertainment for everyone. And I encourage everyone to stop into the North Hampton Township Library, and you'll see that it's not the same old library that it used to be. We have OPN, which is a company, architects that are visiting, and they're making progress updating our new architecture or new design in the library, including furniture layouts and the exterior plans, and a walkway running through outside. Okay, and then don't forget, the library has an annual reading, summer reading program, and that kicks off on June 21st. So if you want to come in for that, that is a good thing to do. I also wanted to tell everyone about the BAC, the Veterans Advisory Commission. We had a Memorial Day ceremony, it was very well attended, there was over 100 people. And for me, it was one of, well, it was one of the most memorable Memorial Days, and you won't forget. Letters were from Vietnam, from, excuse me, letters from the Vietnam area soldiers sent to their family, and they were shared with everyone. And it was a very moving morning, and a very good Memorial Day. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on behalf of the authority, I wanted to let everyone know a few things consistent with what I've been calling my monthly PFOS update. As many know, there are phases of the project for connection, and the authority wants those in Phase 2 to know they should be expecting a communication by mail from the authority within the next 30 days, and also that everyone in Phases 1 and 2 of the project who want to be connected to public water will be. The maps for Phases 1 and 2, if you're not certain as to which phase you may fall in, are on the authority's website. And finally, there was a meeting about two weeks ago involving the Navy. I know Chairman Solskine, I believe Supervisor Moore participated in that meeting with the Navy. There are, we'll say, contingencies, and hopefully future updates with more specificity as to the holding the Navy to account, which I've made the centerpiece of some of my statements. The fact that there have been contingency plans made does not eliminate the Navy's responsibility for causing this catastrophe, and this board and the authority are continuing, despite having found alternate solutions, to hold the Navy to account and will continue to do so. So I'm not intending to be cryptic, but I do hope that in the future, with specificity, I can outline some of the things that are in the works with, we'll say, a concrete statement about what's intended. But things are in the works, irons are in the fire, and we are not letting the Navy off the hook simply because there are alternative options available. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. Barry?
Yeah, I was at the meeting with Adam, and actually, I thought it was a very good meeting, and I was very pleased. Mike Sullivan is the, runs the municipal authority for the township, and he's really on top of it. He and his staff have done an excellent job with that and working with the Navy. And as people vindicate, it's a very complicated problem. It's a complicated issue. There's grant money available. It's not fully funded yet, so we have to make sure we get the funding for that, but we're expecting to do that. Plus, there's a loan with terms have to be finalized on that, too. So there's a lot of things we have to go through, but I felt very confident with Mike Sullivan and the people on the municipal authority, and being on top of this, and very focused on meeting people's needs. Going to the zoning hearing board and planning zoning, the zoning hearing board had a meeting on May 12th, pretty minor, a couple residential appeals. The next zoning hearing board will be held on July 14th. The planning commission meeting was actually canceled in April, or actually in May, due to lack of agenda items, and the next meeting will be on June 10th. Two things happening in the township, which people will be seeing, is the Mill Race Inn. A lot of the preliminary work's getting done for that, and we expect sometime this fall, you'll see some construction work at the Mill Race Inn in Holland, which will be very good. And then also in Holland, on Bucks County Roses, on Buck Road, that large development there, that's going to be done. I believe there's 12 homes going to be built there, it's going to be very nice, and that should start this fall also. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Barry. I have a couple of things. First, just in the public safety area, I'd like to just make mention of the incident in Tyler Park over the weekend that I think most people do know about. First and foremost, I think I feel comfortable speaking for all of us and all the residents of North Hampton, our hearts, and prayers go out to the Campbell family, the park ranger that passed away in a tragic accident, doing his job, putting out safety equipment in the park to make sure that everybody that visits the park has a good, safe time, and he unfortunately lost his life. So we do feel for that family. I also want to thank, I mean, the enormous amount of first responders that responded to the park. And North Hampton played a very big role in that. If you saw boats, and a lot of the guys in yellow suits, that was the North Hampton Fire Department Water Rescue Team, they were on site there with our partners from Newtown. Newtown Fire was there, and then we brought in many other agencies, many other fire, water rescue agencies, the county, the state police. There were just a number of folks that came to try to bring that to a close, and we appreciate all their efforts. They worked all the way through the Memorial Day weekend until they were able to find Mr. Campbell. Just to wrap up for that, you know, we want everybody to enjoy the park systems. That's a state park, it doesn't, it's not really in our purview as far as coordination of the park, but it is in our township, and we want everybody to use all the parks, use them safely, be aware of the safety, things that you need to do. Wear helmets when you're biking, wear flotation devices when you're in the water, and practice all those things, and have a good, safe time there. We don't want Mr. Campbell's death to be in vain. So I just wanted to kind of give that purview for that. On a different note, and on a lighter note, the Fire Department is sponsoring community CPR classes throughout the year. If you go on the Facebook page, you'll be able to find a way to sign up for that. It's free to North Hampton residents, and it's what they call compression-only CPR, that you don't have to do the breathing. A lot of folks don't want to do the breathing, and there is a CPR methodology that does not need breathing, and you also learn how to use AED, a defibrillator device. They're everywhere, they're very easy to use, and you'll get certified in about an hour to 90 minutes. It's not very far. So if you'd like to do that, please go ahead and sign up. Tonight happens to be the first class that we've hosted, and it booked out quickly. Within a couple of days, all the spots were taken, so hopefully we'll get more people in. It is a life-saving skill to learn. That's all I have for the evening, and I'm going to shoot over, Mr. Wirt is sitting in for Mr. Pellegrino tonight, Bob is out, so we'll do the managers and assistant managers' report at the same time.
Good evening. Two items to report tonight. One is, work continues on Second Street Pike between Lanyard, I'm sorry, Tanyard and Upper Holland Road for the Iron Creek Sidewalk Project. PennDOT puts out notices that the next week, June 2nd, through the month, they will be having weekday lane closures with flaggers present. So just be aware that they will be stopping lanes in the coming weeks for that project. One thing, to plug their system, they have a 511PA.com website that you can get update in all state roads, including this project. So if motorists are out there and want to find out what's going on on state roads, including the state roads in North Hampton Township, you can go to their website, 511PA.com. The other announcement is PICO will be in the township also next week in the area of Buck Hill Drive, Fawn Drive, Antler, and Doe Run Drive. They will be working on a $900,000 infrastructure investment program to increase, improve reliability, and reduce the frequency of outages. The residents in those areas have all been notified by PICO, but just be aware that for the residents in the area that's going on. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Solicitors' report, Joe.
Yes, excuse me. Thank you. The minutes of the meeting should reflect that the Board of Supervisors met in an executive session immediately prior to this evening's meeting. Present for that executive session were the five members of the Board of Supervisors, the Assistant Township Manager, the Township Engineer, and me. The matter discussed was a matter of pending litigation. No official action was taken during the executive session regarding that matter, and no action was required at this evening's meeting as a result of that executive session.
Thanks, Joe. Engineers' report, Amanda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. We have some public comment. I'm going to go back to Mrs. Ricardo, because you did sign up. You still want to speak?
Let him finish. He was on the wall.
I was.
George, you got to finish.
Okay, I'll give you a couple more minutes to just
Couple more minutes? Awesome. I'll stick to, I'll stick to the agenda lines with just the basic principle statement of, what do we got here? Ensuring a safe, working environment. I'm just going to ask you guys, is that a safe, working environment? Do the employees have high vests on, no gloves? Now, as investor, this is going to cause injury. They're going to go out on work. They're operating on limited staff. They go out on work, my rates go up. All I'm asking is for some simple procedures. Door posting, Section 3 requires posting of mail notices, but lacks detail. There's no tape. This is the flimsy tape right here. Maybe duct tape, we could put that in a procedure. Take away the excuses from the fraudulent users there. We've got record keeping. There's no requirement to document any employee statements or actions. We have Chris Lehrer making a false statement that I threatened him in front of my lawns, and I have a video evidence that shows against that, which goes against their honesty and integrity. I'm sure they're doing an outstanding job with the Navy trying to collect money, but they're falling short with the investors here, and I could talk about the Navy because I was stationed at Willow Grove for 10 years. Safety protocol, no requirements for reflective vests, weather checks, worker identification, allowing for unsafe practices. Now, who knows what this team was, but there's a five, again, a five-foot breaker bar. Anyone can easily turn and knock him on the head. You can see squatting down right there, breaker bar right there. I'll give this to you. I am OSHA certified also. Dress code and water work details. There is no set procedures for uniforms or vehicle decals, including inches, placements, or anything, to identify our workers. As an investor in the township, I do not want to see, I'll let you all try to find where the actual posting is on this. I don't want to see people coming out dressed like this and then say, hey, did you knock? No, we don't like confrontation. It's a conversation. If this is the case, then supervisors and municipalities should be out there. 15,000 homes is not a lot.
Can you just wrap up for me?
Do we agree that this is not a safe practice? Can we agree?
Can we just wrap up?
All right, well, that's my wrapping up, is that you guys all considered that they update their policies to protect the investors. This is update their policies to protect the investors. This is very dangerous. I can throw a golf ball and hit any vet. There's five on my streets. We have a beautiful war widow right here, so we know that there's a lot of veterans out there that are not going to be as peaceful. There are just going to be reaction. We've got to be careful with this.
We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thanks. Mrs. Ricardo, hello.
Yes, he is correct. I was a war bride from Vietnam, and now I am a military widow.
Just say your name for us again, just in the microphone.
It's Rosemarie Ricardo. You all know me.
Thank you.
Can you share this with them? I only have six copies.
Sure.
This is a letter that I got last July from Mike Solomon.
Okay, wait, just give us the letters and then go back to the microphone so that everybody could hear you. Thanks.
Thank you, Jimmy. I should have been in office. All right. As you see, there is a letter from Mike Solomon. I was in here today to admonish him, by the way. No one came out to check if the creek was cleared. There is mountains of debris. I have it on my phone. I was out there today. That's why my hair looks like this, in the rain, surveying. It is so blocked up that it's absolutely disgusting. All right? The only two people on the block is me and my neighbor, 30, 40, 50, 55, and 66. Mountains of debris. It blocks the flow of water. I also noticed today that when the school was renovated, there is a fourth retention basin now, all draining into that one little easement. There's the one easement, and I talked to Mike Solomon about this today, the one retention basin up near Pickering, all right? There's like, the hole is just filled in, basically, but the concrete unit that drains the water underground to the creek, there's like three holes, like up here, and there's three holes down here. They're all covered in dirt. Nothing is being done to maintain this. Friday, and I went to the state at Kristen's office, and they're not able to do anything. So Friday, I'm meeting with the woman from the Conservation Department at the county to see if somebody can do something. Also, if you look in that letter, Mike notes that there's four bridges that transcend this creek. My problem is, is that one of the bridges broke loose, I told you a couple years ago, because the water elevated to the point where it took off the walkway. There's no piling in these bridges. They're resting on a four-by, wait, six-by-six tube of wood. That's a beam. They dig a hole, they put it in there, and then they nail the two-by-fours, and then they nail the planks. This is not a secured structure.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
When you met with Mr. Solomon today, did he tell you what the next step would potentially be for you?
No, no.
He did? Okay. Because I think, I think he started to put some pen to paper to figure out what the next step is on this.
Okay, but wait a second, guys, children. Two years ago, when we had some unbelievable flooding, it was like the Roaring Rapids. My neighbor's walkway came off of their bridge, and it was blocking, it was actually damming my creek, the creek, whatever it is. Well, not going to go for that. As a war bride and a military widow, I got my equipment out. I tied myself to a tree in that storm with a sledgehammer to break apart what was damming my creek. And then I pulled myself out of the water. So I don't think I should be doing this as 74.
Don't do that again.
I'm going to do it if it means that my property is going to be saved. I'm 74. I always wanted to die at my own house, just like my husband. They're taking me out in a body bag unless they find me in the Delaware. But anyhow, that's the deal, guys.
Okay. I think, I think.
I can, Mrs. Ricardo, good to see you again. I will.
Are you sure you mean that?
Of course.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely. I will get with Mike Solomon and our engineer, Amanda Fuller, to bring this home and get this taken care of.
In the meantime, I'm meeting with the Conservation people, because she got another call about the same creek, because nothing's being done. So I'm going to meet her on Friday. I'll fill you in. Because I am not going to, this is not going to end like this. It's sloppy. They dump everything in there. It's creating a dam for me. These bridges are falling off of whatever foundation they think they have. Come on, guys.
We will revisit it and make plans to come back in touch with you.
If you want, call me. I'll take you on a tour, property inspection.
You did that with myself, Mr. Pellegrino, and our Public Works Director. I've seen the waterway you're referring to.
Come back, okay? It's not, it's still bad, really bad. Now, we'll go for another walk. I'll feed you cannoli and fruit salad, and we'll talk over.
Mrs. Ricardo, do you know the name offhand of the woman you're meeting with at the Conservation District?
Her first name is Karen.
Karen, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ricardo.
And she's at Extension 107.
Wonderful. Got it.
Thank you very much. Now, we will circle back.
And if you think that those cannolis were a bribe, they are.
Thank you. Ed?
[laughing]
Top that, Ed.
Oh, we love you, Mrs. Ricardo.
Hi, Ed Mayer, Churchville. I'm just a quick follow-up on the letter, whether the letter was sent out. Last month, we talked about Resolution 2511, which supports House Bill 1152. As you'll recall, that was a pretty big event, because that's the mandate to direct insurance reimbursements to EMS providers for 911 dispatch calls, which is extremely important to them. They were here last month. I think they were being recognized. And that was extremely good news. At the time, the bill still has, obviously, one sponsor. It had 38 cosponsors last month when I spoke. It now has 46 cosponsors, including 22 Republicans, so it's almost evenly split up in Harrisburg. And Representative Kristen Marcel and Joe Hogan have also signed on as cosponsors since we last spoke. I wanted to just mention two things real quick. The bill, as you'll recall, was referred to committee when we spoke together last month, and that's the Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness Committee. So that bill was referred to committee on April 4. That committee has met three times since April 4. And in none of those three times when that committee met, was that bill on the agenda. So that, of course, that's not surprising to any of us, because we talked a little bit last month about Schoolhouse Rock and how a bill becomes law, and what happens when a bill goes into committee. So I'm only here to ask you, if you haven't sent the letter, I'm going to make a couple of suggestions. If you have sent the letter, I'll still make a couple of suggestions, I guess. The first suggestion is that the letter needs to go to the chair and the Republican chair, or what they call, I guess, the minority chair, of the Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness Committee. And the chairman is Representative Solomon, and the Republican chairman is Mark Gillan. These two guys chair that committee, they set the agenda. They basically, if that bill doesn't come out of that committee, that bill will never go to the general legislative body, and it'll just die there. And that shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, because this is an amendment to a 1921 insurance bill that deals with claims. And so that's a reason why that bill is as old as it is and still stands tall. So I would just ask you to, a couple of things, I would just make a suggestion, that we reach out, again, to Kristen Marcel and Representative Hogan, and remind them that the bill's in committee, and if there's any influence that they can shed, they're not, neither one of them are on that committee, but if there's any influence that they could lend to that bill, at least being heard in committee, would be a start. That's, it's an important piece of legislation, and I know that that's not really the main function of this august body, but it's still important. And the other thing I would mention again is collective legitimacy. I'm not going to go through that whole spiel again, but I do urge you to, when you send a letter like that, to have all five supervisors sign. Mr. Chairman, if you want to sign like John Hancock, you know, as big and broad across the bottom, that's great, but it would, the collective legitimacy is really important, that they see that all five supervisors sign that, and that gets circulated around Harrisburg. People will pay attention to that. Not that they wouldn't, if you don't, but they might pay attention to that. So thanks for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ed. With no other public comment and no other agenda, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good evening.